To tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so have you got?
I do.
Thank you. Genoa Township trustees initiated a zoning text and map amendment ZC 2021-04 to create a Hoover watershed overlay district, and it's Article 7, along with minimum amendments to current articles related to the creation of said district and zoning administration continued from the April 6, 2022 meeting. The legal notice for this meeting was printed and published on April 22, 2022 in the Delaware Gazette and posted at the Genoa Township Hall on April 8, 2022. The following exhibits were added or updated. Exhibit J, all public comments received between September 2, 2021 and May 3, 2022. Exhibit K, staff proposal summary dated April 19, 2022. At this time, I'll turn it over to Joe Schaefer.
Thank you, trustee Yvonne. I believe sort of the purpose of tonight's hearing was you had asked me to provide you an update on any public comment we received since the last meeting. And then I think then the purpose was really for the board to just start discussing the topics that got brought up during public comment and some of the topics the board started to briefly discuss during the April 6 meeting. So I'm not going to go through and read every public comment. Candidly, we didn't receive a ton since the last meeting. Trustee Goodman provided me one from a resident that suggested that I maybe take that presentation and boil it down more into the bullet points, which I've since done and sent out and posted to the website. Mr. Byrd provided us some very thorough and good commentary regarding his research into Vinmar Farms development, as well as some thoughts he had on the overlay. I'm assuming the trustees had the opportunity to review it, so I'm not going to read it in entirety to the record, but I imagine you're all familiar with it. And then we also received a email from a couple, I believe, or it appears to be a couple, that lived in Medallion, just that had concerns and opposition to high-density traffic increases, increasing taxes, concerns about diminishing water supply, concerns about wildlife habitat, and concerns about protecting wetlands and drainage. So again, I didn't read it verbatim, that was just a very high-level review, but that's essentially the only public comments I've received. I think they're, for the most part, consistent with the comments we heard leading up to the April 6 meeting, as well as at the April 6 meeting. I will say, I think Mr. Byrd's commentary probably went a little more in-depth than some of the other, many of the other comments we heard, and provided maybe a unique perspective on a couple of things that the board may want to discuss tonight. The two items I recall the board discussing at the last meeting were, one, debating the density numbers in the proposal, and two, considering whether there was any additional measures that could be taken in regards to furthering preserving as undisturbed lands, some of the lands in these open spaces and any possible future developments. I also know trustee Yvonne still had some concerns about should the overlay be put in place, and then someone comes in, wants to rezone a parcel from RR to PRD, that that rezoning would still be subject to the referendum, still be subject to referendum. That certainly was my intent when I drafted the documents, and when we initially asked council about that, they seemed okay with the verbiage we had in there, it didn't get flagged, at least in terms of needing correcting. I know there's still a little bit of concern about that. I did try to reach out to council the past couple of days since I've been back for vacation, but we haven't been able to make, I called yesterday and once today, we just haven't been able to, must be playing phone tag, or I'm not sure what Mr. Fowler's availability was this week. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to follow up with him on those. But that's sort of the lay of the land. I haven't drafted any changes, because I feel like I'm still to the point where I think the board needs to have a discussion about all this stuff, maybe come to a consensus, and then maybe come up with a bullet point of directives of specific action items you want me to do, or research you want me to do. So with that, I talked a lot at the last meeting, so I think I'm going to turn it back over to the board here.
Very good. Anybody have any updates and new opinions, information?
I did read some of the comments. It's comforting to know that at least I take from the attendance tonight that more and more people are understanding what the proposal is, the fact that some aren't coming back with the same issues that they, we've answered their questions. That's good to know. I don't know if I have a whole lot more to add. We want to talk to, are we going to interview your attorney friend as part of this?
I don't, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I did forget to mention that part. So I did draft and send out to you a draft RFQ advertisement in the criteria. My plan, because that's related to this, but not necessarily, this isn't the only thing that's about, my plan was to bring that forward in front of you on Thursday, your regular meeting to discuss, and I wanted to make sure you're just comfortable. I know a couple of you gave me feedback that you thought it looked generally okay, but I thought the board as a whole maybe should, maybe not necessarily motion, but give me a general consensus that you're happy with what was drafted, and you're okay with me going ahead and putting it out there, and with the dates and stuff that I had in there, so. Because we didn't have that advertised as a discussion item tonight, I just didn't bring it for tonight, and that's why I asked for it to be on Thursday's agenda.
Okay. Go ahead.
I see those as two separate things. The Hoover overlay is an opportunity for us to implement something that will preserve a lot of the watershed areas the way we'd like them preserved, at the same time, it has the impact of reducing density. The attorney RFQ was more for if we decide to review and revise the comprehensive plan and/or the zoning resolution. Those would take a much longer timeframe, and the longer we delay on either one of these, the more opportunities there are for development applications to occur within the township. My thoughts on this is, I think Mr. Byrd had an interesting point about why do we have two sets of density in something that is a conservation plan? Maybe one density, 50% opens, open space, that kind of conservation, and maybe make a few tweaks like that, but I would encourage us to set up a meeting to address that, to discuss it, and to take care of it, either vote it up, vote it down, but not let it hang out there forever.
I don't even know where I want to start with this. I, the reason I brought up hiring the attorney is because, again, I'm waiting on the prosecutor's advice of my fear, is we approve this, and then we find out that anything thereafter, after the 30 days that this, this overlay is approved, there isn't a referendum, it's in place, you have a developer come in, and we approve it, the people don't like it, they want to put it on the ballot for referendum, and they can't. That's the answer I'm waiting to hear. So if that is the case, this is a no-go for me. I am not in favor of this. That's why I want to hire an attorney to see if maybe there's a better way to go about this, because the one thing the overlay doesn't address is Planning Area 5, which, again, historically has been low-density, but now that would still be subject to 2.2 density. People in Planning Area 5 aren't going to be happy with that. We saw, I mean, I wasn't here, but I heard that the room was packed for the recent zoning in Planning Area 5, so it's clear people don't want it there. So the overlay does nothing to protect Planning Area 5. That's my issue with the overlay. I'm not saying, and again, maybe that's our best route, I don't know, but until I have that answer, I can't approve this, or get behind it.
Well, and I respect that.
Yeah.
And I think that's what Director Schaefer is trying to get.
Right.
He's trying to contact the prosecutor's office to determine. We also have Pete Griggs, who is, specializes in land and zoning, and he would be a secondary resource if we don't believe that the prosecutor is giving us the right answer, the answer we want, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
We could, we have two sources at our fingertips. As far as Planning Area 5, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, this is for Hoover. Well, alum is important too, and I don't know how much the alum watershed covers of Planning Area 5. Maybe it shouldn't just be for Hoover, maybe it should be for both, and that would address some. There's areas that don't fall into either one, and we can't help that.
Yep. And I did address this about a year ago with Joe, that what about Planning Area 5? Where does that water go? And it goes to alum.
So maybe we expand it to cover both alum and Hoover, the criteria would be the same.
Ask a question, why wouldn't we just apply this across the board for PRD?
That's my other...
Why are we discriminating based on where you live? That's the primary question I have, is why, why are we so, why is, if you're tributary to Hoover, is there more concern about the environment than if you're not?
And that was my point to Joe last year. Our water comes from alum. Why wouldn't we protect our own water that we drink, rather than, nothing against the city of Columbus, but let's watch out for ourselves. And why are we so concerned with Columbus's water, and we don't care what the water that we drink? You know, that's kind of where I was going.
For me, the big difference, I'm sorry.
I'm finished, go ahead.
Talk or not, so, for me, the big difference between alum and Hoover is the vast majority of the water body of Hoover resides in Genoa Township, whereas a very small fraction of the actual water body of alum reservoir proper resides in the township. So I think it's much more difficult if you're talking about environmental protection and how important that body of water is to the township. I think that's a very difficult argument to make for alum, only because the water body itself is primarily not in Genoa, even though all water is important, and you know, the pollution doesn't obey political boundaries. But I, I just think it makes, it just creates a much more defensible case that we're going to treat properties differently because of just how substantial Hoover is to this presence, Hoover has in this community, and the impact it has on the community. The rest of the township does go to a alum of some sort, whether you're talking about the reservoir proper, or further down to the creek, to what's the reservoir drains. So I think that provides a little bit of a key difference, too. I will admit, when I put this together, I knew that we were essentially protecting Planning Areas 2, 3, and 4, and base, I don't know, and somewhat sacrificing, for lack of a better term, Planning Area 5. I do know that what we're doing is not contradictory to sort of the general viewpoint the township has had over many years in terms of development. The viewpoints, as I've reviewed, the historical planning documents and reports and stuff that's been put together since like the 80s, was generally that the Hoover watershed was special and needed particular attention to it, and was, should have been treated differently. For years, it was, under the Critical Resource Overlay. And that Planning Area 5, the general thought was, development and sewer are going to get up there eventually, however, until that time it happens, let's try to keep the development further south, and not let those areas develop. And also because Planning Area 5, I think topographically is probably, aside from the ravines going down into Hoover, and the, and some of the east side where there's no sewer, Planning Area 5, I think, is also topographically different, as opposed to Planning Area 4 or 1, which are generally between the ridges and flatter, for lack of a better term. So I knew, it's interesting, though, when you look at the existing built densities and compare 4 and 5, you could actually make an argument that Planning Area 5, in some respects, in terms of planned residential development, is actually lower density in current built form, in terms of what's out there right now, compared to Planning Area 4. So that is a bit of an interesting development there. It's, I just think it's hard with sewer being readily available generally on Planning Area 5, although now so on Planning Area 4. And to me, that's really the big crux of, I think we get a lot of the questions of, you know, it was like this north of Big Walnut for a long time, why are we now changing it? And I think it's because the plan, you go back to the 80s, they made the assumption that basically sewer in Genoa Township, yeah, it's too low-density, it's not even cost-effective. And then it sort of became, as Westerville started creeping north, and the county started expanding the system, well, south of Big Walnut Road, west of the reservoir, it's now feasible, so we'll allow the development there. And then it sort of became, eventually, it's probably going to get up to Planning Area 5, so we should start thinking about that, but it was like, oh, never it's going to be in Planning Area 4, and it's certainly never going to be on the east side of the water. Well, until it came to Planning Area 4, because of the lift station with Vinmar Farms, and now we've got Columbus running a sewer. So sewer drives a lot of this, and historically was the big driver in a lot of these policy decisions on density, same with water availability and some of these other things. As those factors have changed, I think it's made it more difficult to argue that policies that were set 20-plus years ago are still valid today. So that's some of the challenge we face. So I guess that's sort of my answer to that question of, my, I guess the other answer to the question of why not just for the whole township, and I think that's a very good question is, and I'm not sure I can, I'm siding, I'm erring on the side of caution on that respect. I have concerns, to what degree, and this is probably where an attorney would be helpful.
And that's another reason I would like to hire one.
Is, to what degree do we need to be concerned about precedent, and what is going to be argued, should we end up being challenged on something? I'm being conservative in saying, I don't want to have some prior development get thrown back in my face, our face, in some court case, and say, well, you allowed it here, you have to allow it here, we're similarly situated properties, because we've seen some of those arguments boil up, come up before, not only here, but I've seen it just in cases in other areas where, you know, to us, properties can seem radically different, but when you're talking to a judge who's from Tennessee, Cincinnati, they just see two properties that are stone-strode from another, they're both relatively flat, and they just, they just don't see it that way. They don't live here. So I admittedly played it conservatively, knowing that ultimately, the risk assessment and the risk tolerance really falls, the board's going to have to make that decision of just how far you're willing to want to take that, so.
But see, that's another reason I want to hire an attorney. I don't want to play this guessing game, and well, we're going to go conservative, let's see how far we can go.
Sure.
And I would like legal opinion to say, yes, you can do this, oh, no, I don't advise this. That, that's going to help me figure out what overlay, no overlay. That's, that's why I'm stuck.
I think it's, yeah.
To, to your point about why not everywhere, the way I look at that is, we hear consistently from Planning Area 4, that the comprehensive plan said .75. That's what people there want, because that's what it was when they bought their property. Conversely, if you talk to someone in Planning Area 1, they're going to say, it was 1.8, 2.2. Now you want to make it, whatever this new figure is, that isn't what I bought into, that isn't fair. So it depends upon how you're looking at it. When you look at the whole township, there's different viewpoints throughout the township, even when you moved in here. I mean, when I moved in here, I didn't know there was such a hubbub about my subdivision, you know?
Going backwards on any regulation, particularly density, can be difficult to justify. I know there's a lot of public desire for that number to go lower, and I, I hear, I've heard it for my entirety of time of being here, so I don't want people to think I'm not hearing, I hear it. I guess my concern is, and again, this probably goes back to the attorney of, is that enough justification for you to take that action? I, I just can't sit here and tell you yes. I know there's a lot of political components that get involved with that discussion, I try to stay out of all of that, and I just try to stick to the what I think we can do and is defensible kind of thing, and advice, and that's what I try to give you. I don't want to get involved in the political end of that spectrum, but that, that's just my other concern, because it's not that I'm against the will of the people, or a lot of the comments we're necessarily hearing, it's just, I just want to make sure whatever we do, we can do, and we're not going to just do something that, and then people are happy, walk away, and then we get a development, we get challenged, blows up, we lose, and then everyone's like, why, why didn't you guys get this right? Kind of thing.
And to me, I know, I know it could, it's going to cost money to hire an attorney, but to me, that is money well-spent. I would, it's going to be a lot cheaper for us to pay on the front end to get it right, than get it wrong and be sued.
I would agree with that.
So, so that's where I feel like, and we have, like you said, people have been talking about this since you've been hired. So again, to me, I think people would support whatever it costs to fix this once and for all. They've been begging for this. So I, I don't know where we are, but I like your due date of May 31st for the RFQ.
Okay, yeah, I forgot that was three weeks.
Because I don't, I don't want to belabor this, you know, let's, and I agree with Connie. I would like to solve this tomorrow, but I, I... I would like to solve this tomorrow, but I, we need to make sure we're on the right path. I mean, I agree, the urgency of this, we need to have this done.
Let me ask you this, not to put you on the spot.
No, go ahead.
If you found out that in the Hoover overlay, that developments were referendable, would you feel more comfortable with putting this in and then proceeding on the next steps?
And, but I talked to Joe about this. Yes, I would, but then I talked about approving this, and then we talked to an attorney, and they say, oh, no, this is your better avenue. Joe advised not to approve this and then rescind it and do something else. Correct? Do you remember our conversation about that? Whereas, if we approve the overlay to protect Two, Three, and Four, and then we get advice from an attorney to say, oh, no, I would go about it this way, similar to what the comprehensive plan used to have, that's a better route than you would have to get rid of the overlay.
I think it would be dependent on what the end desire and goal is of the board, in terms of what, in determining what that better route is.
I'm okay with the, as long as, and I'm not okay with 1.65 with the density in the overlay. But I do like the concept. That should be our lowest density in the township. And I agree with you. I talked to Joe. In Planning Area One, people like, seem to like 1.8, 2.2. Let's keep it. My issue is Planning Area Five. What do you do with it? Because I don't think those people are going to be okay with 1.8, 2.2. It's clear.
Which is where the Alum Hoover thing comes in. Yes, we're protecting a critical resource with Hoover, but a water source for the township without.
Yes. And to be, to kind of piggyback with what Mr. Bird said with the Grand Canyon, you can't tell me that Alum isn't, doesn't have the same preservation qualities that Hoover does. I mean, it's still a reservoir, it's still people's drinking water, it's a state park, for heaven's sakes, you know? It's a conservation area. So, I think that whatever justification you can use for protecting Hoover, you could use to protect Alum, is my point.
I would just caution with that, with the argument that we're making on the water protection, that we not take it too far. Because technically, all water goes somewhere in somebody's water.
Yes, I know.
And I think that's what, that's the risk you run, and that's why I go back to, what's the difference between Alum and Hoover and all these other watersheds? Hoover reservoir is primarily in Genoa Township, physically in Genoa Township. That's the difference to me. And that's where I think you cross over, and we're the ones who look at it, recreate on it, you know, hike along it.
But the fact that Alum is a state park, you can't live there, you can't build a house there, you know what I mean? That's, you could debate which ones has more preservation, because you can live on the edge of Hoover almost, up, you know?
On the fringe.
Yes, on the fringe.
So, you'd be talking more of a reservoir, not specifically Hoover reservoir watershed overlay. You'd be talking about, you could call it a reservoir watershed overlay and just drop Hoover essentially, where now you're protecting the watersheds for both Hoover and Alum. But again, knowing that Alum ultimately drains to the creek and all the water that's in Alum eventually goes to the creek. I just get worried that someone's going to say, you might as well, to Mr. Antonetti's point, just do the whole township at that point, because it's all water that goes somewhere.
Yeah.
And it all becomes Westerville's drinking water, becomes into Westerville reservoir, goes down into Westerville. Like, some of that eventually comes down to the creek down by my house, I think. So, you know, like, that's why I think, that's why I think we just have to be a little careful with that argument, which is, I, it's... I find it interesting that there has been such a focus on the nature end of this, and perhaps I'm the one to blame for it, because I pushed that angle a little bit. But that's not the only reason we're doing it. Protecting the natural qualities and the drinking water was on the list, but there was other things we put on that list of why we're doing this. Yeah, nature's a big, and water quality's certainly a big part of it. And maybe it's because we use the term watershed, the focus tends to be on the nature end of it. But, you know, we talked about recreation and education and some other things going on related to Hoover. So, again, I'm not saying we can't go down that path. I would just advise and caution, and maybe that's another thing that we put on our list of, you know, what do we need to be careful of here as we proceed and think about this?
So, might I suggest that with the RFQs being due the end of the month, it will take them a week or two probably to go through them, rank them, et cetera. That maybe we look at rescheduling a meeting for this topic after they get those RFQs?
Yeah.
And then we'd have something set, we wouldn't have to re-advertise all those kinds of things.
Yep, that sounds good. You all right with that, Mark?
Yeah, I'm okay. I have my engineer's hat on, and I'm a firm believer in the unintended consequences. So, the language in there says that if any part of your property is in this overlay, then the entire property is in the overlay. So, you know, I'm envisioning, we have this boundary based on probably, I'm guessing, the USGS map. So, even the county's GIS mapping doesn't come close to identifying the exact property line. So, I'm guessing this source doesn't accurately define the tributary area. So, I could see where you would get challenged, where a property owner would come to you and say, you have put me in this overlay district. However, I can show you that I am not tributary to the Hoover reservoir, so I want removed. And what is our process for mitigating something that might... Trust me, developers will use all kinds of creative ways to get what they want. And I can see this being a challenge where they would come and say, you've... What is the science behind identifying the limits of the tributary? And if you're going to say, well, we took a USGS boundary that's flown from, you know, 10,000 feet and overlaid it on top of our township, and that means you're in this overlay district, that's going to be very difficult to... Not all of them, some of them are obvious, but on the fringes, might be very difficult to defend. And then when you compound that with, hey, if we're touching the corner of your property, where all of your property is in this overlay, whether it's tributary or not. Those are the kind of things that concern me, is the language is so difficult. It's comprehensive, I'll say that, but it is also very difficult. And one of the other unintended consequences could be, is if it is so difficult to figure out, that a developer can't figure out how to get a PRD done, then they're going to start looking to annex to get their PRD. So, I just want us to be, that's why I'm not, I'm reluctant to just jump into this. I love the idea of reducing density and preserving the land and keeping us rural, but there are some things that I think we really need to consider that might be unintended consequences.
Yeah, I think that you always have to consider that stuff with any other time you do this. Regarding the properties that are in or out in that argument, I think that's a fair point, something that could definitely happen. I think it's important to remember with this, if it's a planned development, you always have divergences at your disposal. And neither an applicant's going to come to before they, before they even make the application and say, hey, we're out, we want to do something here, but you have us in this, we think we can provide you proof. We're either going to ask you to do a rezoning to take us out, or we're going to ask, we are going to kindly ask that the board initiate a rezoning to take us out, and here's our evidence. And then the board can deal with it that way. Or they could just come in and say, we're going to make the application for our development, but our divergence is going to be, we don't want to have to comply with the overlay because we don't think it really applies to us, and here's all of our proof. And at that point, the board that would be sitting would get to review the proof and determine, you know, if they agree, yeah. Or in the other case, say it's, you get a tract and it's 1% in, and now they've got the whole, they've got to comply with the whole overlay, even though they got a 1%. Again, the divergence process exists for that very type of scenario, where if the sitting board says, yeah, that's a little much, we don't think 1% is fair, we're going to basically grant your divergence to not have to follow it. I'd prefer not to do that unless we absolutely have to, but there are potential remedies. Now, I'm not saying those are perfect remedies, and maybe that's just, maybe you're not comfortable wanting, creating that situation, you don't want to do that, and that's, you know, the board's prerogative there. But there are potential remedies to get around that. And whether, how we determined who was in and who was out was a source of debate, and I think we ultimately decided on this because we felt like the opposite could get argued, where we, if we say, only properties that are 100% in qualify, well, what if we, you know... Are you 99% in, are you 100% in? What about this little inch here? Like, I felt like it was just easier to say, well, when we put this overlay in the GIS, it grabs your parcel per the GIS, and knowing that if someone makes the counterargument, we can always just grant it. I always felt like it was easier to grant a divergence and just say, okay, we acknowledge you're not in it, or it's such a de minimis amount, it doesn't make practical sense for you to have to follow it, as opposed to trying to work it the other way and try to pull them in when we say they aren't in. Like, that's much harder to do.
Would it be good to get those things put in writing, options? Or would you rather not have it in writing?
I wouldn't put them in, that's what they pay their attorneys for.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
To figure, to come to those conclusions and figure out those solutions. I mean, if they were to meet with me, I'm not going to hide behind it, you know? They really started pushing during a meeting, you'd be like, well, you do have an option here.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But I don't know if I would codify that.
Okay. The other thing you might want to address is if they're, they want a divergence to get out of the Hoover overlay, what rules do they follow?
Well, at that point, they would just, well, they would have to include that as part of the divergence. But my assumption would be, we'd say, you would just defer to the PRD regulations then.
The regular PRD.
To the regular PRD. We would just treat you as a regular PRD.
Okay.
That's how I would envision it going forward.
But do we need to get that in writing?
I don't think so, because I mean, the board's going to get to review the divergence request. And if it's a request and the solution, you're not comfortable with what their solution is. You don't have, you know, you don't have to support the divergence request.
Go through the divergence request criteria, answer the questions.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, you have that discretion.
Okay.
As far as the referendum and that question goes, I mean, we certainly could just put language in there to really like belt and suspender it, that make it 100% clear that there's any such act, the rezoning from RR to PRD per se, and a property that's subject to this overlay is still legislative act subject to referendum. I mean, we could put some sort of verbiage in there.
I like that.
To your point, though, I want to make sure that we are writing something that actually is true.
Yep.
And I want to go to court and be like, well, that's nice, that's what you want, but that's actually not how this is going to work.
It's not legal, okay. Well, and by the...
And that's what I was hoping to counsel about, is like, do you think if we just put this extra verbiage in here just to make it more clear and make some more people, people comfortable with that, you know? Is that, you know, a factual legal conclusion that that's going to be the case, and can we do that?
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Do we want to set a date?
I'm good with that. We can always cancel it if we don't need it.
Right.
Just, yeah, just know if you cancel and then want to meet again, we'd have to re-advertise.
Yeah, which is why I thought if we get a meeting on here, we won't have to do the re-advertising.
I mean, which we can do, it's not a huge deal at all.
I do think that tends to be confusing to the public. They think it's a new item.
Because then anyone who's watching this meeting will hear, okay, they continued it to this date, and they sort of can follow along.
Right. So, are you saying your deadline is the 31st?
That's what I currently have drafted.
And so, when would be, when is the earliest you would like to meet?
I mean, depending on how many we get back, 30, your regular meeting in June's on the 2nd, so that's probably too tight of a timeline for us to get them back, evaluate the criteria, and then make a decision on the 2nd. Your next, your sort of hold meeting is always the 3rd Thursday of the month. That would push it out to the 16th of June. We know that night's always going to be available, because we always hold the hall the 3rd meeting, or Thursday of the month. If we start talking about other months, I have to start digging into the reservations calendar to see if anyone's in there. The zoning commission, I think, meets, that 2nd Monday is going to be the 13th. So, the zoning commission will be in here on the 13th, and that's the continued hearing night for that con proposal.
I mean, I could, I have a, have to be in Dayton that day for orientation for my freshmen. But it's over at 5:00, that gets, it's pretty tight. But I could do it.
I mean, it doesn't have to be the 16th.
Yeah, that's my, yeah, I know, if you push it to 7:00, it would be no problem, I could get here by then.
Could you just quickly summarize what is the process? So, you're going to receive proposals.
Oh, you're talking about the RSQ?
Yeah.
Oh, essentially, we're going to receive the, we would receive the proposals by the 31st, and staff, we would send them all out. And I think, Connie, maybe, because you did the police station bid. I basically used the format that we use for the police station facility RFQ, and basically just put our stuff in it. So, was, in that scenario, did each board member get to score how they felt they scored it? Or did just Paul score it and then give it to you?
I think Paul scored that one.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I don't remember, I was doing that at all. And the bids are all opened at one time, so they hold them until 4:30 on the 31st or whatever, and then open them at that point or the next day, so that there's no early views of anything. At least that's what we did.
And since this isn't like an RFP, where you're actually going to get prices, it's just RFQ. So, it may not quite be as formal as, you know, like the, we're all going to... I'll talk to Paul about how we do procedurally, proceed with that, but... So, it sounds like staff would assign the criteria, you know, the scoring criteria, present it to the board. If the board's agreeable, they would review the criteria and who basically scored the highest, and then...
Because I remember somebody else doing the scoring and presented them to us in order and said, here's the top three, and we recommend this one because.
Okay.
So, in engineering, this process is used for, you know, a set fee, estimated fee. I think it's, it used to be $25,000, you had to go through an RFQ. You interview, you, if you get 12, that doesn't mean you have to interview 12, but you establish, we're going to pick top three, we're going to interview the three, you're going to pick one, you're going to negotiate a contract and a price, and then if that fails, you can go to the second one. Is that how this works for legal services too? We're going to decide one based on the best qualified person, individual. We're going to negotiate a contract, establish a fee, whether it's a retainer, how much we're going to be willing to spend, and then we enter into a contract to hire.
Well, that sounds logical, but I am not the expert on that. I would suggest that those questions go to Paul Wise. Not to cut you out of the picture, but I think Paul has more experience.
I can't even tell you how many times Paul's gone through that process.
That's going to determine our meeting schedule, right? We're going to go, right? We're going to go, you're going to get these statement of qualifications, you're going to review them, you're going to provide them to us through an email, we're going to evaluate them. Then we discuss it at a public meeting? Or is that executive session where you're negotiating the hiring of a consultant?
I believe...
I see, this is where I talked to Paul about that, whether we could do this in executive session, and it's an employee. We can only do that for an employee, but if it's a contractor, it has to be an open session. That's what he told me.
Sounds correct.
That's why we weren't able to do this, you know, rotation or whatever. So, it's going to have to be during public session, unless Paul can correct us.
Whether or not we have to interview them, I don't know. I think the general, I think the process you generally laid out sounds correct to me. The only thing I don't know is maybe whether or not you actually intend to interview them.
We can just discuss and then decide what we think is the most qualified.
I'll clarify that with administrator wise.
So, I'd rather meet earlier in June, if this is going to be a lengthy or pro, you know, process of... I mean, at the next meeting, then what do we do? Discuss the results and the ranking?
Well, I want to make sure we don't start conflating too much. I guess it's a law, because we're talking about an RFQ. To me, like, the RFQ, it's sort of like Connie said, is one thing, even though they're related. The RFQ is one thing, and then this hearing is another.
Okay.
So, to me, we're asking the RFQ to look at a very large picture zoning thing, of which this is a part, but it's not the totality.
No, yeah.
So, I'm not sure if discussing it during the Hoover hearing is appropriate, until you get to the point where you've hired someone, they've reviewed the document, now they're actually giving you the feedback specifically on the Hoover item for that hearing.
So, if we meet again and we don't have those answers, then what's the purpose of meeting in between? I don't know that I'm going to feel any more comfortable.
Other than getting an update, if you're not ready to discuss some of these, if you feel like you need that feedback before you can have these discussions and make some of these decisions on some of these policy items.
I might, I might not, I don't know. Then how about we just add it to the June meeting? Can we do that? Because I don't think that's going to take very long.
To the regular June meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You just, we'll do a status update, and if it's five minutes, if it takes a little longer. I've had to sit through other departments' presentations that have taken a long time sometimes, so...
Yeah.
I can, they can listen to Lowzoning.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd rather do that, and you will have all of your, at least a number for this.
We should at least know who's all on the list. We should at least know who's all on the list.
And then maybe at that time, we can schedule another meeting?
Yeah. That's probably the best way to do because then you'll have a little more information at your disposal come the first, your regular meeting in June. To then schedule this again and maybe set a date that you might feel is a little more realistic.
And you might have a timeline of when you're able to meet.
I mean, maybe we will know by, maybe you will be able to pick up on June 2nd, you know, who it, who it is you want to hire. Or even if you want to hire anyone.
Yeah.
You could just say, no, we're not going to, we're not interested in any of these. But, um, I, I think that makes the most sense.
Okay.
We'll need a motion to continue it, knowing that it'll just go on the regular agenda.
So it's June 2nd?
Yeah, I believe that's the next.
Yeah.
Meeting date.
So.
Yeah, June 2nd.
Continuance. All right. So I'll move to continue the public hearing for the subject zoning text map amendment dated February 14th, 2022 to create a Hoover watershed overlay district along with minor related modifications, also known as ZC case number 2021-04 until June 2nd at 6:30 PM in the township hall. Roll call.
Trustee Antonets?
Yes.
Trustee Goodman?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes. I'm going to close this. Correct? Can I close?
Yeah.
All right. I make a motion to close the hearing at 7:11 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Call trustee Antonets? Trustee Goodman?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes. Motion passes. All right. At this time, we're going to hear case number ZC 2022-02, J.C. Manny Final Development Plan. I'll call the following hearing to order at 7:12 PM. And I'll read, what? Yes. Right? He's going to recuse himself?
Yeah, if he wants to formally announce it then.
Might as well do it now.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just want to go on the record for transparency's sake. I will be recusing myself from this, the hearing of this case because our engineering firm that I work for has represented the client, J.C. Manny.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll read the legal notice and I'll ask everyone who wishes to speak on this matter to be sworn in. Do you swear to tell the whole truth, the no, hold, sorry. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Maxtown Property 169 LLC requesting approval of a final development plan to construct an approximately 4,944 square foot commercial building on approximately .8862 acres at 6475 Maxtown Road, Westerville, Ohio 43082. Parcel number 31734105003000. A vacant lot currently zone planned commercial district, PCD, also known as J.C. Manny, ZC case number 2022-02. The legal notice for this meeting was printed and published on April 22nd, 2022 in the Delaware Gazette and posted at the Genoa Township Hall on April 8th, 2022. An attempt to send notice of this meeting to adjacent property owners was also made. The following were marked as exhibits A through J. Exhibit A, legal notice. Exhibit B, affidavit of advertisement. Exhibit C, sign-in sheet. Exhibit D, application and plans originally received January 19th, 2022, last revised April 20th, 2022. Exhibit E, fire marshal letter dated June 28th, 2021. Exhibit F, traffic analysis summary dated June 29th, 2021. Exhibit G, trustee acknowledgements of the zoning commission's recommendation made on February 23rd, 2022. Exhibit H, staff memo dated April 22nd, 2022 for May 3rd, 2022. Exhibit I, staff technical review dated April 22nd, 2022 for May 3rd, 2022. Exhibit J, all public comments received between January 19th, 2022 and April 3rd, 2022. At this time, I'll turn it over to Joe Schaefer.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to try to fly a little higher level here and not read verbatim the entirety of the memorandum and tech review because both sitting board members are familiar with this project, having voted on the rezoning last fall. So, and I also think the legal description does a pretty good job of generally describing what the proposal is. So for anyone listening at home, as, since we have no members of the general public in the audience. This property is located on the north side of Maxtown Road. It's currently vacant. There's some PRD homes to the east and north of it. To the west is a single-family residence, owned rural residential. Has not voiced any opposition to this proposal. In fact, I believe they provided a letter of support. Across the street to the south is Westerville. This portion of Maxtown Road is owned and maintained by the city of Westerville. Property was rezoned from the rural residential designation to the planned commercial designation in November of last year. So moving along, in terms of what's proposed, this is, this proposal is substantially similar to the design you saw back last fall during the rezoning process. There had been some changes to the site, but in terms of the general site layout, in terms of where the parking lot is, number of parking spaces, size of the building, look at the building, where the stormwater is going to be located, that's all the same. Landscaping is the same. Buffering is all gener, is, is the same for the most part. So, um, I don't want to belabor all those points. And again, the legal description did a pretty good job of describing what's going on here. Westerville controls the access. They required the applicant to agree that their driveway would become a shared driveway should the property to the west ever develop in order to minimize the cuts on Maxtown Road. I believe those agreements are on place and documentation of such is in the submission application. And the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they've got that all wrapped up at this point. Regarding stormwater, really the only change there is there's a potential that if, if feasible, they are looking at possibly putting the stormwater underground, which is typically we find ideal because obviously now you're not looking at it. But if that's not cost feasible, they will keep it as an above-ground facility as was shown during the rezoning process. Uh, utilities, those items were all worked out. They did opt to go with the septic system and not connect to the public sanitary, although they have noted in their documentation that they are reserving the right to connect to public sanitary sewer in the future, which is really not something zoning dabbles in anyway because that's a right they would have regardless of really what we do here. They, they have the right to connect to utilities as they see fit. And zoning doesn't have purview over sanitary sewer connections. But right now, the plan is to just put an onsite septic system and they've got the permits from public health to do that. During the rezone, we discussed that Delco had noted that, uh, regarding water service, they would not be able to provide fire flows. So the applicant has entered into an agreement with Delco to install a fire hydrant at the intersection of Maxtown Road and Hillmar Drive. We've got correspondence regarding this and the fire marshal verbally verified that this would address any fire flow concerns that he would have with the project. I mean, I can go through and describe the landscaping in detail, but it's all in the memo, which has been entered as an exhibit into the public record at this point. And like I said, it's, it's pretty substantially similar, if not 100% similar in regards to what's being done on the west, north and eastern property lines. At one point, the applicant had tried to, wanted to try to reserve some rights to take some of the fencing on the west side away and make some other potential changes to the site, increasing building height and stuff without having to come back through the process. The zoning commission wasn't a fan of those concepts. And as you can see in the tech review, they, while they didn't incorporate it in their motion, they strongly prefer those items come out. Those items have come out. So the only reservation of rights left is the sanitary sewer one I already discussed. And as I noted, that's really doesn't fall under zoning purview anyway. Regarding lighting, a lighting plan illustrating locations, designs and intensity of site lighting has been provided. The proposed parking lot will be lit via spillover building mounted lighting. This design adheres to the spirit and intent of the zoning resolution and eliminates the need for any standalone parking lot light fixtures. Signage is probably actually where we got in the most detail with this review because of a divergence that's going on and some of the bonus criteria that's going on. So they are propos, and during the rezone, if you recall, at, at some point, they decided to just take all the proposed signage out of the package because they just weren't ready to make some of the final decisions yet on it. And so it wasn't incorporated in the final rezoning application that was approved. But now they've gone through and made those decisions. So now you have the signage proposal. Mr. Benson's got it pulled up on the screen there. So the front of the building will have a building mounted side that says J.C. Manny Co. on it. You can see there that, and we've got the sizes and we verified that the sizes are zoning compliant. They are exercising some bonuses that they're permitted under the zoning code due to the speed of the road, the width of the road, height of the building, stuff like that. And then they will have one freestanding sign between the parking lot and Maxtown Road. Typical freestanding sign that we see in front of most of these types of businesses, obviously advertising the building or the, the business. They've incorporated electronic message center sign, which they're permitted to do. And we have verified that all the design and dimensional aspects of the sign are being proposed, are compliant. So I'm not going to belabor and go detail all the numbers. They're all there and again in the report. If you have a specific question on them, I'm happy to discuss. I'll get into the divergence. So all the previous divergences granted during the rezoning will have been incorporated into this application. But there is one new divergence request. So I'll go into a little more detail on that. So, um, the applicant is asking for a divergence from section 2003.03, which requires that visual screening be a minimum of five and one half feet high. The applicant is proposing a total screening height of three feet, which is a one-foot mound with two-foot planting heights for the landscaping between the front parking lot and Maxtown Road. The zoning commission was supportive of this request. And then I just have a staff note there. It's a little long, but it's very thorough. It's staff's understanding that based on conversations with the applicant, that this request derives from the fact that the applicant does not want the required screening to otherwise block their proposed sign. The relatively small nature of the site coupled with the right-of-way dedication required by Westerville and the zoning resolution, as well as coupled with the zoning resolution's required setbacks pertaining to signs, in addition to the building, has left the applicant little to no room to move the sign away from the required screening. So basically you have two sort of requirements, one landscaping requirement, the sign setback requirement that are pushing together. And so the applicant did a good job of providing an exhibit of basically what the conflict is. So here you can see, you can see where the sign is being placed. And because of the building and parking lot having to be pushed forward to the road due to the small nature of the site and the desire to get it as far as possible from the residents to the, to the north, it left them very little room to put the sign in a code compliant location. In, in such a way that if they did the mounding in the, in the planting per the zoning resolution, it essentially was going to block the sign and make it not visible, which obviously doesn't make much sense. So, uh, in order for them to have a sign, which is reasonable out there, it's, you know, most of the other businesses along that way have freestanding signs of some sort in front of their businesses. They've asked to basically lower the mound and planting height requirement so that sign can still just remain visible. Their alternatives, other than just not providing a sign at all, which again, wasn't consistent with basically what's been allowed for the other properties along that stretch, was to move the sign closer to the road. And it, so it was either move the sign closer to the road or lower the planting screening height. In my discussions with the applicant, I sort of came to the conclusion that lowering the planting height probably made more sense because it was probably going to be more consistent with what's been done out there for some of those other businesses along the north side of Maxtown Road. Specifically, like if you look at Harris Automotive, Harris Automotive doesn't have a huge mound blocking its sign or in front of its parking lot. And the applicant even provided some pictures of what the existing landscaping is and there's Harris Automotive. So you can see Harris has generally the same thing, where those are probably two, what? Two, maybe three foot shrubs and then their sign. They don't have a five foot, you know, shrub mound combination that is totally blocking that sign.
Can I stop you for a minute?
Yes.
Has the zoning changed? Is that why theirs is that way?
Um, I, no, I don't think the landscaping requirements have changed. And I don't think the, that was a different zoning district. They're in PCD.
Got it.
But the landscaping standards are relatively the same. I didn't, I didn't go back and look at the whole Harris plan. I do know there was at least one divergence going on out there, um, if I recall correctly for that site. And it probably also had to do, if you go further west, there's properties that don't even have that much landscaping with their signs. So I think it's generally, if you go down that corridor, yeah, there's, there's one from ages ago. That's basically got nothing, just the sign and a couple of trees here and there. So, um, so I think what they're arguing for is just be allowed sort of consistency with the existing development pattern that already exists along the north side of Maxtown Road. So I don't know if I need to really need to re-read the rest of my staff note because I think we had basically just covered it in what I described there. So moving on to staff comments, the 2019 comprehensive plan recommends planned commercial utilization of this property. In chapter four, planning area six recommendations of said plan with quote significant visual screening and noise barriers for the single-family homes to the north. The specific recommendation dates back to the 2008 comprehensive plan. A similar recommendation existed in the 99 comprehensive plan, which noted that the properties on Maxtown Road will develop in a manner similar to the existing commercial and industrial development within this vicinity and states, quote, "Further encroachment of residential development into this area should be discouraged," end quote. So a lot of the conflict issues we evaluated when we did the rezoning and ultimately approved the rezoning. But I'm just entering that again into the record. Again, I noted the Board of Trustees approved the rezoning and preliminary development plans for ZC, for the rezoning, which was ZC case 202103 on November 18th, 2021. Per the Ohio Revised Code requirements, the rezoning did not become effective until 30 days after said approval. The Genoa Township zoning map was updated accordingly in December to reflect the rezoning change. Regarding this application, the zoning commission recommended conditional approval of the subject application during the regular meeting on February 14th, 2022. Their motion of approval incorporated the applicant's agreement to finalize development text prior to the trustees' hearing and is evident in staff's latest technical review, which is attached. The current submission is, you can strike, strike that last notation out of the memo because it used to say the current submission has not yet addressed all the concerns related to the development text. That is no longer the case. The applicant has been working very hard on this. And I can say with the last set of revisions we received, as noted in the exhibit list, they finally did address all the items related to the development text from the report. So the city of Westerville was provided a copy of the plans. The city conveyed to staff that they did not have any additional comments to add to what was already stated in their June 28th, 2021 letter, which was incorporated with the submission. They did note they had been working with the property owner regarding the right-of-way annexation and private access easement. And like I said, I think both of those items are pretty much wrapped up at this point. Should the application be approved, the zoning permit, as previously alluded to, will need to be obtained prior to, from the development zoning office prior to construction. Separate zoning permits will also need to be required for any signage. Similarly approvals from non-zoning agencies such as the Fire Marshal, County Engineering, Department of Building Safety, City of Westerville, et cetera, may still be required prior to construction. Regarding the technical review, I am pleased to report that there are no longer any open comment. There are comments that you'll see not struck through, purely informative at this point. All the comments that needed action to be addressed and struck through have been addressed. And that is pleasing to everyone. So with that, I'm pretty sure I covered all the major facets of this proposal and the substantial changes. There were some architectural changes made to the design of the building. Paul, I don't know if you have those to pull up. I just remember this because I wasn't sure if I had it in the memo. During the rezone, the applicant had said, oh, they're not going to do some windows on, on a couple of sides of the buildings. They went back and revisited that and just sort of determined that was probably not the best approach. So they have provided some windows on those sides, I assume, to provide lighting to those sides of the building. As you can see, they're relatively small. Shouldn't really impact the neighbors to the north or to the east. In my opinion, they won't, especially when you take into the fact of setbacks in the required landscape screening that they're already having to do. And if this was a house, you'd have a house here with windows on the, on the side of it. And, you know, you can tell by the size of them, they're not huge, that they're, someone's going to be able to look in and see everything that's going on in the business. I think they're primarily just to get some natural light into the space. So, but the, other than that, I think the design of really the building itself in terms of trying to feel a little more at home in a, on a property that's next to residential homes and trying to mirror some of those residential design aspects, incorporating that into the design, that all of those principles still remain with this design. So with that, Madam Chairwoman, I will turn it back over to you.
Very good. Thank you. Do you want to start? You want me to start?
Applicant?
Oh, yes. Thank you. I forgot. I'm going to turn it over to the applicant.
It's Pat Mandrell, 169 North Otterbine in Westerville. As Joe is excited about the review being scratched out, we are super excited about the final review being scratched out. So really Joe brought up everything that has additionally happened since. since we met with you last and that being the sign and the windows on the side of the buildings. They're two feet high and it was just for some light getting into some workspaces and stuff. And the water retention, they're trying to get it under the parking lot so we don't even have to have the basin on the east side by the properties and stuff. I think those were the only changes since the last time we met. So, and we don't have a PowerPoint presentation because they basically showed our slides anyway. So, but we'll be more than happy to answer any questions or anything.
Very good. Thank you. All right. You want to start?
I don't have a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, just wanted to, you may want to just note that there's no one.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to do that and then I forgot. Yeah, for the record, there is no one here for public comment, so we're going to skip it.
First off, thank you for taking out that 35-foot-high reference. The ability for you to go from 22 and a half to 35. You know, I'm much more comfortable with that. I just wanted to double check it's out and Mr. Schaefer verified that. In addition to the removal of the trees or fence on that western side. I mean, if it happens later, you know, come back and ask permission.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the divergence, let's start with that. I have no problem with the divergence.
Are we talking the front one?
The front one by the sign. Okay. I have no problem with that. I do have a question. As I looked at the Harris picture, I'm assuming you want to keep them trimmed?
Yes.
So that you can read the sign?
Very tailored, yes.
Good plan from a business standpoint. There was a reference in the memo that the sign base overhangs the parking lot curb by 3.7 inches.
Yes. It doesn't, it goes to the curb. So it goes, here's the end of where the grass will be and then there's a curb. So it will go. I would love to move it up, but you know, I'm trying to keep that 10-foot distance.
Yeah, and there's no way to make it narrower or shorter.
Well, our problem we're running into, those EMC boards or panels. So when you put them together, you have to have a certain size.
Okay.
You know, this is the max amount that sign will be. But even more sign says, you know, when we get to order, it depends on what they have available as far as sizes are concerned. So we kind of went as wide as we could. But yeah, we might be able to take a panel off or go with a different company that has a smaller panel that we can squish it in. But yeah, that's a concern of mine too.
I just hate to see you having to fix that all the time.
I know, I know.
An unplanned business expense. Okay, I have two more questions. First off, there's a reference in here to the city of Westerville has asked for a 10-foot-wide sidewalk bike path area. And it says that at this point, you're not ready to do that because they are, it's not imminent. If the city of West, or let me rephrase that. Would you be willing to commit to donating or providing that easement in the future? Should they come through and want to add that bike path, sidewalk, whatever?
Well, I think that's part of that 10-foot area, isn't it, Joe? That we already gave them. I think that's where.
I don't know what their intent really is for the right-of-way. I don't know, I don't know a lot of that. I don't know if that's just part of the thoroughfare plan or the combination of future lane expansion, term lanes, facilities, or if that's part of, it could, it's possible that could be part of that. I just don't know what.
Well, what I'm reading is in your memo, "The city of Westerville has previously advised the applicant to plan to provide a 10-foot-wide sidewalk slash bike path area. However, no such path appears on the plan. The applicant indicated during the rezoning hearings that this item would not be provided as it was her understanding that Westerville would not be constructing any pedestrian pathways in the vicinity in the near future."
So I think both are sort of being true. Where they're saying anticipate that we may want this, but maybe in that we may want this with the right-of-way.
Okay.
And I think, Pat, as I said previously, we discussed with them, they had sort of told you.
It wasn't on their budget for the next five years, he said. So he goes, we have no plans for that.
Sure.
But I always had the impression when I spoke with them that it was that 10-foot area I gave them. And then the discussion came up that we might need to run a sidewalk up from that side, from their sidewalk, if they put one in, to our building. I thought that's.
That was my recommendation during the rezoning was since I can't really control, you know, unless we make them put it on the property as part of the plan, develop it outside of Westerville's system. Which doesn't make a lot of sense because Westerville's right-of-way.
And it would go from nowhere to nowhere.
Yeah, and if anything was going to happen, it'd probably be part of the larger part of the Westerville. That, I'm always a big believer in pedestrian connectivity. This type of business may not have a lot of walk-up traffic necessarily. But if, in the future, if someone else starts, not that I want to go anywhere. But we have to think about what happens if J.C. Nanny is here and some other commercial users here. It theoretically could be a business that generates more walk-up traffic and just trying to keep it at.
Sure. It's an ice cream shop.
And the township is generally really trying to push the pedestrian connectivity along. So that was just my thought. It'd be nice if that, if Westerville was going to make them do that, that they have sidewalk one condition to the building. If Westerville's not going to make them do it, it doesn't sound like it's in the relative near future.
So I may be misreading this. My understanding was it went from the western side of the property across the front to the eastern side. That that was the path they're talking about. You're talking about a path that goes south to north to get from that path to the building.
The east or west is what the common mental.
Okay, okay.
And it sounds like the applicant has identified the fact that their understanding from Westerville is that that actually is going to lie. I just, I don't know that for a fact because I never even thought to ask that question, to be honest.
Okay.
I just don't know why Westerville's asking it at that point. I just know they're asking it at that point.
Sure. And I have no problem if they're going to put that path in the 10 feet. I would like something that says, and it's okay with us. Go ahead, do it at your expense.
Oh, yeah, we don't care. I guess I thought, I guess I thought it was their rights, so I couldn't say anything anyway.
Yeah, it's a right of, yeah.
I mean, we signed over that land already to them, so they already have it.
I think that's just a point of confusion because I really, I read it and read it and now I'm still a little confused, but I'm okay with it.
I don't have a recommendation about connecting to that sidewalk because when the applicant told me, it doesn't sound like Westerville's going to be doing it anymore.
Okay.
Or not.
Joe, your microphone's not on.
I've been talking this whole time. Something picked me up. I'm sorry, Paul.
Okay.
So, but when the applicant sort of said, well, it doesn't sound like Westerville's going to be doing that anytime in the near future, I just took that recommendation out of the memo because it didn't seem like it made sense at that point.
I'm fine with that. The only other question I have then is on the fencing. In the memo, somewhere it noted that there was white fencing going to be put in. I looked at page L-1.1 and it basically says, you don't have to go take it out.
Is that the landscape one?
Yeah. It basically says, "The fence is going to be based on availability."
Right.
Then I looked at the pictures and I saw white fencing with horizontal boards.
Right.
White fencing with vertical boards. Then I saw wood tone fencing with the boards going. So what I'd like to know is some commitment. The statement "based on availability" troubles me. If you said to me, it's going to be white, it's going to be wood tone, you know. I don't care if they go up and down or sideways. That, I don't care, as long as they're all the same way, not a mix.
Right.
But I don't want to drive down the street and see a purple fence because that's all you could get that way.
No, what it came up was during COVID and we were looking at fencing and I called fencing companies and they said, I can't make a commitment out in another 12 to 18 months as to what we're going to have available. That's when everybody was panicking about, you know, the supply chain and everything.
Right.
The, we would ideally, fashion-wise, like to go with a horizontal fence. But the intent was either to do a black one or a white one because we're going to have white and black trim on the building. And that's just based on what's available at the time. You know, we're planning on, are you saying so around the trash can area, whatever we do on the west, I know, on the west side, whatever that fence color that is, the trash can area should be the same color? Is that your question or?
I want to make sure that in my mind, all the fencing would be the same color.
Okay.
And I mean, that's up to you to tell us what you're going to do. But I want some commitment as to, we're not putting up purple fencing.
We are not putting up purple fencing.
A little white here, a little black there, a little wood tone here.
White, black, or natural. We'll go with that.
Okay.
All the same.
And then the one picture, it says the fence on the south side, the south side of your building is the Maxtown roadside.
Yeah, I don't know where that says that.
Basically, this should, this should say fences?
Oh, yeah, that's not, some of that should say west.
Right, it should say west. I apologize.
No, it's.
I missed it too.
Joe's worked with me long enough on these, he knows that. Every once in a while I find something he didn't and I feel good about it.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to fence up on the south side.
Okay, so that's on the west. I'm fine. So that's the end of my questions. I just think that we need to probably as a condition.
Yep.
Add the fencing color.
Yeah, good call.
And the clarification that the fencing question is on the west.
Yes, yes.
I would agree with that.
That the fence is on the west side of the property, not south. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, it was good. Thank you. I have a couple of questions as well. I saw, see, it's on Joe's memorandum on page four. It talks about proof of right-of-way width and it says that Westerville for documentation for access.
What number of letters?
Uh, let me see. Page four.
The tech review or the?
I don't know. I have page, oh, no, it's two different ones. Proof of right-of-way width, that's what it is, on page two. Guess.
Oh, the proof of right-of-way width.
Yes.
We have that now.
Okay.
Maybe the memo didn't get updated to reflect that, but I know the tech review did.
Okay, all right.
Basically what we have is, as part of the exhibits that the applicant, I think, actually provided to the city as part of the right-of-way take, I did finally notice that there is a measurement showing the width of the right-of-way on that exhibit. So I've crossed it out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is, Westerville was looking for documentation for access. And I believe that was on page four of the memorandum.
That was the connection to the property to the west and it sounds like the applicant has finalized that with the city.
Okay.
Per their testimony.
And then I just want to make a note that in the documentation there was reference to your current waste removal service that he could provide service for you here. We have a contract with Rumkey, so I don't think.
I don't know if that involves the commercial businesses.
Not for business?
Residential.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that's good. I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, when I had contact who we deal with, which is local waste, they said they do other commercial people on Maxtown.
In, yeah.
I didn't think anything of it.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was just residential.
It's residential. Got it.
But to add to that.
Yes.
If I may. It did say in there that they would collect after 7:00 a.m.
Yeah.
We also have an end date at night. I'm assuming they only want to work during the day, but no. Nobody wants to be awakened at 11:00 p.m.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah, when I asked him, he goes, no, it's normal business hours.
Okay.
Starting at 7:00 a.m.
And then tab five in your binder, there was reference to site improvement documents given to Westerville. Have your, I guess Westerville said they didn't receive them? Maybe you have given them?
Sands Decker told me he submitted everything that needed to go to the city of Westerville, Delaware and Delco Water.
Okay.
So, and that was maybe three weeks ago, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And a lot of that engineering stuff is stuff that generally happens after the zoning process.
Okay. How do we know? It says that Westerville says the driveway should be 50 feet from the nearest driveway. I didn't see anything on the diagrams to show 50 feet from their entrance place. Is it 50 feet from another driveway? I don't know.
Well, that's the discussion with the property to our west. The city of Westerville wanted us one entryway for both properties. So we have, we got our attorney and the city's attorney together and they drew up. And it's been submitted to Delaware, which has been stamped agreement that we would give the right-of-way to them under conditions.
Okay, so that, I knew that you had an agreement with the property to the west. So that's to eliminate the 50 feet from the nearest driveway?
I'm assuming that's.
Yeah, I know that the east isn't a problem to Hillmar there. So, yeah, that's generally how it works. Because otherwise you'd have some conditions where like no one could ever put a driveway in. So that's, I think, the agreement that's been coming into place is the long-term solution to eliminate that scenario is the shared driveway should that property ever develop.
All right. And then the last thing is just a divergence, which I'm okay with too. But I do worry about your sign getting hit too. Okay. Do you have anything else to add?
Fortunately, there's no parking on that side, so hopefully no one would be pulling in there.
Unless somebody backed into it.
But yeah, you can see that.
I'll take that back. I didn't mean to put that out there.
Running out of land.
Right. A bumper. All right, so where do we go from here?
The divergences, you do the divergence review.
Do we do all, we do the previous or just the one?
No, just the newly requested one.
Okay.
So the board can handle however you want. Like the zoning commission reads through all those standards and then discusses each A, B, and C as it pertains to each divergence. However, you don't necessarily have to do that. It does make for a little bit of a cleaner record and show that you did think about all those things.
Are we on page nine? Like, I don't even.
Seven.
Seven. Oh, because I'm writing up.
Section 2707.08.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. All right, so read through this.
Generally, that's how the zoning commission handles it. And then they answer A, B, and C as they go through them. A, B, C, D, E, F.
All right, so we're going to review each divergence request against the standards set forth in section 2707.05 of the Township zoning resolution to determine if such a request is warranted. Section 2707.05, "Divergence requests shall demonstrate how granting the request will advance public interest and general purposes of this zoning resolution by promoting or not having an adverse impact on one or more of the following purposes. A, the conservation and protection of natural resources, scenic areas, wildlife habitat, and the historic unique natural features of the land." Do we discuss these each as we read them?
Yeah.
Obviously, it would use no impact, you know, that kind of thing.
Yes.
Or if there is an impact, you just state what it is.
Okay. Well, I agree, no impact for A. B, the health, safety morals, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of Genoa Township.
I would say that it helps promote safety and general welfare by making the sign visible to the public passing down Maxtown Road.
So enhances.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, C, the quality of life within Genoa Township through the protection of the total environment and the prevention of nuisances and hazards and the provision of adequate light, air, and convenient access to property. Again, I would say enhances, correct? With the hazard and the nuisance and adequate light. D, the assurance of the capability of land uses, which are either adjacent or in proximity to each other. Well, I'm thinking, okay. E, the orderly development of all lands within the Genoa, within the township to its appropriate, sorry, appropriate use. I'm saying no impact, you?
I agree.
And F, the most appropriate use of land to facilitate and provide adequate public and private improvements.
I would say no impact.
No impact? All right, I'll agree with you. Per section 2707.07, unless a deviation from development standards is specifically approved as a divergent, the same shall be complied within. Number one, divergence from section 2003.03 for a combination of mounding and landscaping to total three feet in height instead of the required five feet, 5.5 feet, five and a half feet.
And you already went through the findings as you went, just did that exercise, unless you want to restate them, but.
Yeah, it's bas, basically a safety factor.
Okay.
We'll be able to structure the minutes to reflect the finding aspect of that.
Okay, very good. So when we do, if we do a motion to approve, uh, we do the findings of fact, one, two, three? Is that what we need to fill out before we do it?
Have to have three, that's just how we.
Yes.
Script it out, but so, yeah, you would do the findings of fa, or you would, you would have a motion to approve, that's what you're going to do. Um, you'd want to draft, I would advise drafting out what those conditions are going to be, if the conditions we discuss, if you're going to put those conditions in there, exactly what your verbiage is going to be, so you don't have to come up with them on the fly as you're making the motion.
Yep.
You'll incorporate the divergence that it sounds like the board, uh, is, uh, supportive of. And there's only one divergence, so you would just essentially sort of read that. Incorporating the findings that you just did. And, um, you would incorporate the prior granted divergences. Admittedly, I don't know if you have to do that, but we always do that as a belt and suspenders thing to not, to close any potential loopholes. And then, yeah, you get, you do sort of the, the findings of fact and conclusion, you know, the zoning of the property, the, what the comprehensive plan says you're supposed to be doing for this property, on this property, the recommendations of the commission, the recommendation of regional planning, all that kind of stuff.
Yep. Okay.
So if you want to discuss those items or list with those items out, like I said, it makes your mo, making the motion easier because now, then you're not trying to think of it on the.
Right. So these first, this first part, we'll talk about the fence color?
The conditions, um, or commitments made by the applicant.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yep, that it'll be horizontal slats in white, black, or natural tone.
And then I think the commitment that the fencing illustrated is on the west side, not the south side.
Right, the photo illustrated.
That's not so much of a commitment as it's just.
And then the only fence that were, that you have is around the garbage, correct? And it's on the west side, or you also have a privacy fence? So both fences, will they be the same color?
Ideally, they would, I don't know, measurement, I mean, the, all the trash ones I've ever seen are white, but I don't know if it's because how small they are or.
But you don't want to commit to them both be white, you just, you are going to commit to.
We do the best we can and make them both.
Both will either be white, black, or neutral.
Right.
Okay.
But not necessarily matching.
But not necessarily the same color.
Right, and I've never seen the trash ones be horizontal, they tend to be more vertical because they're just panels they put up. That's what I've seen in.
Yeah, I mean, they, they can do them horizontal, yeah. I think they're usually a little more utilitarian looking.
I mean, we want coordinated, we want it to look good, but I'm just going with what's out there.
Can we make a note that any, any, um, changes be, um, passed through the zoning office? Would that be appropriate and then you could make the decision?
Yeah, just my discretion is going to be limited to what's in the books and is this, is the change ultimately within the spirit and intent of the approval. So if there's something the specific the board wants, or if there's directive you want to give me or limit what that change, I suggest you and the applicant come to agreement to what that verbiage is and incorporate that as a condition. Because otherwise, the way it's probably presented, I'll probably just be like, well, as long as it's white, black, or neutral, or doesn't necess, or natural, doesn't have to necessarily match. If the board wants it to match, both of them to match, then I would suggest you make that a condition, as long as it's agreeable to the applicant.
Well, my personal preference, and that's what it is, I can't tell you what to do, other than I can not approve your application, but then, sorry. But I, I think that generally, one color looks better, not mixing colors. I have no problem if you want to put vertical at the trash can and horizontal around the exterior.
Totally agree with that.
And that would be a clarification, I, that would be helpful for me.
Sure.
Is, if I'm looking at it as well, the board said they got to match, be the same color, it's got to be one of these three colors, but they don't care if one's vertical and one's horizontal.
Yeah, because we don't want your business looking like a clown did it either, you know? And it doesn't, so, you know, we're good.
Right.
I imagine the applicant's going to want to supply for the zoning permit relatively quickly, just so they can get the building permit pulled, so.
Sure.
Imagine, this should still be pretty fresh in my mind when they come forward and that'll be something they have to put in the building permit application.
Right.
So are you, do you want to take out the, any changes passed through zoning? Or what kind of changes, were you thinking any changes or were you just talking about the fence?
I think we're good without having that now.
Okay, all right, that's what I was wondering, okay.
And if you run into a problem with supply chain, then talk to Joe.
And that's why we have that dis, that's why the code does allow me to have some discretion with changes like that, because we know those things can exist.
Oh, it's difficult right now, without a doubt, so.
Historically, the board hasn't wanted to make someone come back because now they've got to do a off-white fence as opposed to a pure white fence kind of scenario.
Okay. All right, so we have that taken care of. And now we have to do the finding of fact, right?
Yes.
So one would be that it is, this has been dedicated commercial, designated commercial district in the comp plan?
Yeah, the, the property was recommended to be utilized commercially, zoned and utilized commercially.
All right, what else?
The zoning commission did a thorough review and recommended approval. I don't know that you really need anything else, do you?
It's a hard question for me to.
Are you not allowed to?
Always one of those things where I really can't tell you what the what in there, so.
So if you're comfortable with it, Joe, we'll leave it at that.
Well, I guess the only other thing is it's compliant with the zoning resolution, with the exception of the one divergence.
Okay.
Yeah, generally, the finding is a fact, you want to talk about what the comp plan says, what the zoning resolution allows, that the, you know, is the use permitted? You know? The, the, any kind of benefits it's having to the community or what it's doing to be compliant, those types of aspects. Finding, finding the fact is difficult, it's actually one of those things on a training list that I made, because I think every one of our boards.
Yeah.
Struggles with that sometimes.
Okay. With that, I think we're ready, right? Are we missing anything before I start?
You got the, um, let's see. Yep, I think we're okay.
All right, I will move to concur with the zoning commission's recommendation of approval and thus approve the modifications the subject final development plan application submitted by Max Town Property 169 LLC to construct an approximately 4,944 square foot commercial building on property located at 6475 Max Town Road, Westerville, Ohio 43082, currently zoned planned commercial district, PCD, as further described, detailed, and illustrated in the plans and materials of ZC case number 2022-02, also known as J.C. Manny. And furthermore, incorporating exhibits A through J, as well as any commitments made by the applicant during this hearing, including, uh, the fence around the garbage container and the privacy fence on the west side of the parcel will be black, white, or neutral, and they will be matching in color. Anything else you want to add to that? Did I, is that clear enough?
Well, in the, um, the photo in the, um, materials indicates on the south side it should be west.
Very good, yes. Do I need to reiterate that or that's good that she?
Preferably, yes.
The photo in the application states that it, the fence, the privacy fence will be on the south side, but it, the applicant has clarified that it will be on the west side. All right, I further move to approve the subject final development plan with stated divergences from the following sections of the Genoa Township zoning resolution. Number one, divergence from section 2003.02 for a combination of mounding and landscaping to total three feet in height instead of the required five and a half feet, 5.5 feet. And incorporate the following divergences previously approved November 18th, 2021. Number one, divergence from section 1203.01 to allow rezoning to PCD on a parcel that is under five acre minimum and not adjacent to another parcel zone PCD. Divergence from section 1203.03 dot A and 1203.03 point B to reduce the 75-foot green strip and screening setback from adjacent residential lot lines. Number three, divergence from section 1203.09 to reduce the sunny, 75-foot parking lot setback from the street right-of-way. Number four, divergence from section 1208.01 to reduce the 100-foot building setback from any district boundary line and right-of, a street right-of-way. This motion to approve the subject final development plan, which is not subject to referendum, is based on the following findings of facts and conclusion. Number one, the property was recommended to be zoned and utilized as a commercial district in the comprehensive plan. Number two, the zoning commission conducted a thorough review and recommended approval. Number three, the. Oh, it is compliant with the zoning resolution except for the one divergence. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, discussion.
Just, I think there was one, when you were reading, you said the divergence, the first divergence, you said section 2003 dot 02, I think.
Oh, thank you.
2003 dot 03.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want us just to amend your motion to reflect that?
Yes, I'll amend the motion with the first divergence of, it's from section 2003.03 for a com, combination of mounding and landscaping to total three feet in height instead of the required five and a half feet.
And I will second the amended motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Roll call, trustee Goodman?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, I will announce the hearing closed at 8:02 p.m. And then I will move to adjourn this meeting at 8:02 p.m. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Goodman?
Yes.
Trustee Vaughn?
Yes. Meeting's adjourned at 8:02.